I would like to call the work session to order and before I turn it over to our distinguished council president, I would like to ask the town manager to announce the protocols.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to remind residents on Zoom to please keep your cameras off and your mics muted unless you are involved in the present conversation. If you are involved in the present conversation, we ask that you unmute and turn on your camera. And then if you are in person, please speak audibly into the hearing microphones.
Okay, thank you. Now it's very good to your council president.
All right, thank you. The first item is a recommendation on proposals for resurfacing the tennis court and I'll turn it to the town manager. That was his recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. So as you all may be aware of, the town has budgeted in its fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget about fifty thousand dollars for major maintenance work on the tennis courts, including new cleaning, crack joint, esging, resurfacing, fiberglass, taprick overlay, color of new lines. So for this comprehensive work, we issued an RFP on June seventeen, which was on July ten. That process followed a procurement policy, including notice being published on the email and marketplace advantage website, the municipal league website and the town website. In addition, notice was sent out to residents via weekly email blasts. The town received three proposals in total. One from Bishop's Tennis, one from Back Creek Builders, one from, and one from GMC Contractors, included in materials for all three bids. But quickly, just to summarize the high points, Bishop estimated fifty-two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars for the work. That's about two hundred, two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars more than budgeted by the town. Bishop also added another potential item to the scope of work that if the council wanted to consider that would increase it by another twenty-five hundred to five thousand. They have done work on the tennis courts previously and they include a five-year warranty for the work. The second bid was for forty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars less than budgeted by the town. They have not done work on the town before and I believe that it's a relatively new company. But the references did speak highly of them and their ability and they put it a one-year warranty. Finally, the third contract, the third proposal was for eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, which is thirty-nine thousand five hundred more than budgeted by the town. In addition, they actually excluded one of the scope of work items, leaving it not to be needed. And they made no specific mention of a warranty. Once I got all three bids, I reached out to the tennis committee and was involved in discussions with them as well to get their feedback. So after looking over the three proposals myself, reaching out to references and of course speaking heavily with the pool committee, not pool committee, my apologies, the tennis committee, I am recommending Bishop, even though they are slightly over the amount. They were the tennis committee's clear favorite because they spoke highly of the work that was done last time. They said that it's hold up longer than was expected. They did it about ten years ago and they expected this, what we're doing now to have, they were told this would have had to happen far earlier than it actually did. So they believe that. And then so they're also much more experienced than the other bid that we got. That's also within the reasonable price range. So in the end, my proposal is to move forward with Bishop due to their familiarity. And with the approval of the potential approval, potential approval of the proposal to do a budget amendment that would add the amount needed, that amount would differ depending on if the council would want to go forward with the optional scope of work as well. I believe that if the council did want to stay completely within the budgeted amount, Back Creek Builders could do the job and do it well. But they do have a more limited warranty and do not have the same experience. And so that includes my prediction.
And remember, you're not deciding tonight. You're deciding whether this is going to be put on an agenda to be decided. So it's basically to update you on where it stands and to see if you want to move forward or if you want its staff to do more work.
Can we, because I'm the liaison for the tennis committee and I, you did a really good thorough analysis of all of it and definitely agree that the tennis committee feels that Bishop's is the best for them based on all the work that they've done in the past. And also, you know, their warranty is much more significant than a one-year. Would we be able to go back to Bishop's and ask them if they can be, do the scope of work within our budget of fifty thousand?
All the time.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I would recommend that we try to, you know, try to get it down a little bit if we can.
What's the proposal again? How much of it?
Fifty-two.
Yeah.
So it's two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I think it's worth a lot of asking. They don't get to give an answer.
Yeah.
Have a beer. Do you have comments?
No, agree with Shannon though. Worth a shot. And I think it's worth putting on the agenda for next session, next council meeting.
Did you get feedback from the tennis committee on their addition, which is to patch the low areas to stop water pooling on the court?
I have not heard feedback on that, on the options for the work.
Do you get that feedback before we vote on it?
Yes.
Good. All right. Been glad about that.
Did they, does the tennis committee meet?
I mean, they've had meetings.
Okay, because if they're gonna, if you're, if they're gonna give input on what council president Lawrence is asking, they can't do it on email. They have a meeting.
Well, I'm sure that Carrie would be open to having a meeting to discuss what council members are asking. Yes.
I know, but you need to, it is the public.
Yes.
All right, no other question. So we're moving to take this to the September meeting because there's no August meeting, right?
Well, it could be on a non-special meeting.
Is it something, is it something they can't wait for it to happen?
I don't know. Why can't it wait?
The only consideration about waiting is that I was told that the work is best done in the fall before it gets too cold. And I don't think, and so it kind of just, I'll ask them once if, if they begin, if the proposal was awarded in September, how quickly they can turn it down to begin, I think it will begin depends on.
Okay, all right. So if the council's comfortable, once we find out the timing, if it has to be done August, we'll have a special meeting for the work session. If not, it'll be on the September, which is only two weeks late.
That's fine.
So we'll.
Okay. The next item, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor. It's a resident request on a no parking sign and we need a change to the town.
Okay, so, so this is a little confusing. So first of all, as you know, our resident, Esther Finkley, signed a name to the town to ask for a, a sign. And as you all know, signs are, and I'll let the town attorney reiterate or explain all this. But so in order to erect that sign, that a code amendment has to be introduced. Or is that correct?
That's right, Mr. Mayor.
And so, and so the, and in the meantime, the, I think, is, is. Did somebody go out and look at it to make sure that they recommend it's okay?
Yes, it's a very high area and I'll just quickly mention that we have place comes there.
Yeah, so in the meantime, the staff has tried to solve the problem temporarily. But under our current rules, and then the town manager is going to talk about changing the town code to make this a lot easier. But for now, the only way that we can put that sign up is to, is for a sign, a code amendment to be introduced to put up that sign. And then it has to go through the legislative process where you have to delegate. And then we have to vote on it in the future meeting and public comment, especially the neighbors have to comment on whether. So, so that's really where it's staying. So the resident made a request and the staff researched it and they recommend that this sign be put up. And now it's up to the council to decide whether you want to move forward with this code. Did I say that right, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, that's right, Mr. Mayor. But does everyone know what street?
Sorry, right?
We have a description.
I can show you a picture.
Like.
So the only issue tonight regarding that request is whether you're okay with moving it forward to be on the agenda in September. What is the change? I mean, and then, and now, Mr. Town Manager, do you talk, do you want to talk about the changes that you're, that you wanted to have a discussion about to our sign?
Yes, and also just real quick, I can show you the spot in question.
Which is already a no parking zone under state law and county law. Because you cannot park within five feet of the driveway.
Yes, it's, it is already a violation, but and that's why we have put comes there. And that's also why we at the staff recommend that a sign is placed there.
So this is a no-brainer.
Do we, do we really need a code change then? It's already a no parking area.
See, one of the issues about this council is that there are, there are, some of our citizens believe we have too many signs. But because we're, because in past history, all the signs are in the code, the only way we can legally erect it is by, to, right now, under our current code, is to, is to have a process to have a code amendment.
Mr. Mayor, so the code provides that parking, no parking zones need to be designated by ordinance. And so you don't, you don't post a sign until you've designated an area as a no parking zone. Because this is already a no parking zone under other law, we may not need an ordinance. If you, if you give me a couple of minutes just to check on that.
So you can't park there anyway?
You cannot under, under state and county law because.
I would never know.
But people don't know since there's a sign there. But on the other hand, we do get complaints from people that there, we have too many signs.
Right.
And some of our signs are not authorized, by the way. And that's why the town manager's been talking about.
Yeah, so our, our code works right now is, it does list all the, it lists no parking zones, limited parking zones. And it basically, and then basically these have to be designated before any signs can be placed. So it basically decides where signs can be placed in town and we're not allowed to place signs outside of those areas. So instead of listing all these spaces in the, in the code, I recommend that we change the code where it gives us the authority to designate these spots via policy and resolution so that we can respond to this quicker. And when I say policy as well, is not only would it say that we can do this, but it would still have a process of notifying the neighbors and still allowing public input. But when there's issues like this, it can be difficult to respond and cumbersome to respond. And so being able to more quickly move to, basically be responsive to these complaints and others. For example, as well, it's, if there was another issue that arose, I'm trying, I don't have any type of example ahead. But if another example arose, it could also, this could be a recurrence. And I think it would save the town time and effort by restructuring how we do no parking zones in the tennis.
And by the way, everybody, this is, I believe, Mr. Town Attorney has recommended that we do this for, since he's been in office. Right? To change it from the code to the regular regulation.
Yeah.
As you recommended it.
So one way some other jurisdictions do it is the code will say, you know, the town council is authorized from time to time to adopt a reservation, regulation designating no parking zones or other traffic laws. And then the mayor and manager are thereafter empowered to erect appropriate signs. And so the code, all the no parking zones, et cetera, aren't enumerated in the code. They'd be enumerated in regulations or what some other jurisdictions call traffic orders. You do need to have them published somewhere so that the public has adequate notice of them, but they all don't need to be set forth in the code.
And that also means if there are spots we discover where the signage may not be necessary, it also allows them more easily. There are rather scary or annoying times, taking more easily.
Yes, here's a thought I have, which is, why don't we put this on the agenda for the next meeting? If it turns out we don't need an ordinance, then we don't need an ordinance and we can remove it from the meeting.
I mean, there are two points. One, Ron is still checking whether we need an ordinance for the placement of a sign in the area that is already designated no parking. And we'll get that answer, I hope. And the other point, which is a bigger point, is that we can redo our code so that in the code it becomes very simple. That it, we may from time to time designate areas of limited parking and no parking. And the actual zones are in regulation, not in the code, which are, which are much easier to change and modify, not going to a code amendment. That's the point. So on that second point, I would like to see some other towns, what they're doing, make that available to the council. So we know and understand what's involved and when regulations are made through their council, through the regulation, or if it's just done by the executive.
Sure. Yeah, I can give you some samples. And unfortunately, an ordinance is required in this instance if you want the sign to be enforceable. So you don't need an ordinance to erect the sign, but the code currently provides that citations can be issued for violations of this chapter. And so you would at least need a provision in the code that says it shall be unlawful to park in violation of official signs. And you don't have a provision like that. So we would at least need to add that.
All right. So it sounds like that in this case it would be better to introduce a code amendment so that this sign could be, right, and be enforceable. And then in the future, you know, because I think we all want to address the complaint, the valid complaint of the citizen. And so I think that that would be the best way to go. And then we can continue the discussion of how we're going to change it so it's a lot easier.
All right, so we.
Is that, is that acceptable? Is that what you all agree? Because usually if three people agree, then we ask the town attorney to draft it and it'll be introduced. But I mean, the good news is that.
Let's do it.
The good news is that in the meantime, the staff has come up with a solution to solve her problem so she can wait, so she can be patient about it. All right, so we are, she's very happy. She's very happy with the solution that the staff came up with.
So we are agreed to that Ron could be, you would be asked to prepare a code amendment for our parking code to cover a no parking sign in a no parking area as specified.
Yep.
All right. Moving on, it's Kabeer's turn. Changes to the town code, noise control is recommended by Kabeer Kumar.
Well, I'm surprised to hear that. I think this is a recommendation by EJ and Ron. And it came out of discussions this season, this year with the activities of the pool. There have been complaints from, I think it's Elizabeth House or North Park Avenue. And so one.
Forty, forty, it's forty-six fifteen North Park Avenue.
Yes, yes. The, the building that's, that we can see from the pool.
Yeah.
And one possible path we have is to get a waiver and Ron explored that. And we have very good communications with the DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection. And I think their advice to us is these complaints don't, you know, give them enough reason to grant us a waiver. And, and in fact, DEP visited with us and confirmed that the noise levels were largely within conformity with the rules. And, but I think EJ, if I'm not mistaken, your thought was just to be on the safe side, we might exempt ourselves from that noise ordinance in case we, for future years, as we carry on activities.
Just with respect to the pool property.
Yes, with respect to the pool property, exactly. So that's the background to this. And Ron can specify the ordinance. Ron, I don't have the language in front of me, if council members are interested.
Sure. So state law provides that municipalities can decide by ordinance what county laws apply in the towns, except in the areas of zoning, taxation, and certain public health laws. Those three areas, towns cannot exempt themselves. But the noise ordinance is one that the town could consider exemption. And the proposal is not to exempt the town entirely, but just the, the pool property.
Can we limit it to normal full hours too?
Exactly.
And, and meats, the swim meets is the real issue.
When they get excited. Yes, all right.
When the air horn.
Is it just the difference between the eight AM start from the meats? Oh, no, the meat started nine, right?
Starting nine. It's this Saturday that's going to take out.
The, the, yeah, that the primary concern was the, the air horns from the start time until nine AM where quiet hours typically apply.
So after, after nine AM, are we fine?
We have been fine. We ran all the tests. We have been within, within the noise levels as specified by the county code. But there have been a lot of complaints and it's the first time, I think, in thirty years that I am aware of that this has happened. Although Linda tells me it happens.
Yeah.
You're in there. Yes. And so this gives us the legal comfort. It doesn't mean we can do whatever we want. But it gives the town sort of the legal comfort in the face of these complaints. And then obviously we want to, our biggest primary concern is mitigating noise impacting our own town and neighbors, which is anywhere in place.
Yeah, I know. I think that we should totally do this. I mean, the swim meets are, it's, you know, five, five Saturdays. Like it's, it's nothing. And to have these no, noise violations.
Well, we write it as we exempt the pool during, or noise ordinance during daylight hours.
Yes. We can write it to be even. Yeah, we can be very specific, I think, Robin, to exempt ourselves.
So, so let me, I, this is what I wanted to discuss to clarify with the town attorneys here. So right now, the, there, there are times when we are in violation of the county's ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the complaints we get are not from our citizens. We get them from citizens of Village of Friendship Heights.
That's right.
So they don't really, we, we don't, so we don't represent them. So, so technically, instead of calling our town staff and harassing, they should be calling either the village staff or they should be calling the county.
Which they have done, which they have done. Yeah.
So while we want to be good neighbors, you know, we don't, we don't work, you know, we represent our citizens. And we, and, and, and.
That's right.
There's just like two or three people that for years have harassed, you know, our staff. And so this way, if you change this, then they call, they can say to them, call your, call the village or call county. Because we are not in violation. And, and it's really been unfair to the staff to get the, well, it would be good violation. Anyway, but I, but I think this is a really good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes. Thank you, Jeffrey.
Can I, can I ask a question about, you know, noise? I, you know, I, I think it's time for us to work on noise within our town, what our quiet hours are, you know, just generally in terms of neighbor to neighbor, because people sometimes really violate it. And maybe that's something we can put our future.
Well, why don't you ask the town attorney what, what?
Okay.
Because you'd be surprised. The, the level of a violation is way higher than you can imagine, right, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes.
So the kind of noise that you might be talking about, it's hard to regulate. Does he, I.
Yeah, I've seen that.
I mean, so what are the kind of noises that you're talking about?
I'm talking about late night parties in people's backyards past eleven o'clock at night.
But, but those probably, those probably don't violate the county.
I don't know. I thought the county code was eleven o'clock at night. Am I wrong?
Well, there, there are. The county code works in two ways. You have decibel levels. And then you have a noise disturbance that is not subject to any decibel level. A noise disturbance is what a reasonable person would find disturbing under the circumstances.
Which is a party in backyard.
At, at eleven at night.
Well, sadly, I've had extensive conversations with the DEP this summer. And I can tell you that is highly subjective and they sort of, one person's nuisance, another person's party and vice versa. And so.
Yeah, they have to agree to engage in enforcement.
And by the way.
And they, they are very selective about that.
And, and the county has very limited staff to invoice, to, to enforce them. So, but I think that, I think that it's good that you bring it up because we can start, you know, publicizing, because it's, it's really all about peer pressure, you know? And people need to be advised that they're, that, just like the town attorney was saying, that it's really what our people think is excessive and they need to let their neighbors know. It's like, that's, and so.
So I just invite myself to the party because why am I at the party without me, you know?
But also the police are also empowered to enforce it and they don't really have the resources either. So the best thing is for us to publicize that we, that we would, you know, we can have informal guidelines, like you should, if you're going to have a party.
Invite all the neighbors for God's sake.
Right. The, the music should stop at, should stop at a certain, you know, just like, like guidelines. It's the same with, it's the same with, there was at one point that we wanted to, that some people wanted us to have guidelines about if you're going to have a party, a big party and have a lot of cars, that you, what you, how you advise your guests, like to not block driveways. And so we, so we could have some kind, and staff, if you all like this idea, that you could have the staff draft something. It says, you know, like if you're going to have a party, here are some, some, some guidelines that, to be kind to your neighbors, you know, they're not, it's not a law.
Right.
But it's, because people want to know, like, what are the community standards for this and what's expected?
It'd be nice if you said so.
So so Ron won't let you pass that.
What?
I like the idea of a gentle notice.
But we could have like, just recommend, you know, Ron can write it so we're not, we're not.
All right.
Okay.
But I didn't realize that, you know, another issue, of course, that came up, that a former councilman, Congas, I may throw it up, is that all these illegal fireworks that people were shooting off recently, right?
Right.
And that's.
There have been a couple this year, it seems, for sure.
Because those were illegal, I'm not going to be telling you, right? But they don't, but again, they don't.
All right.
That might be something to discuss at another point is, is to have in our code because there appear to be at least a couple this, this year that created some nuisance for folks, it turns out.
But I mean, you know, if kids are lighting off fireworks, I mean, that's not our town's fault. You know, I mean, you know, like, it shouldn't be, people shouldn't be angry with the town staff that, that people are lighting off fireworks. Like, it's not, you should call the police if you're upset with it.
Right.
And see what they do, I mean.
Yeah, but I think, you know, the culture is such, I think folks go to the town staff first, you know?
Right, but that's not really fair to.
But we can publicize that it is, it is the, the law about fireworks.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
Of course, that we should do a town blast.
Exactly.
The law is.
Right, right, yeah. Before July fourth.
There was, the people that violated don't read those things.
Yeah.
So citizens are friends. We can have a council.
Okay, we should move on now. Okay, we should move on now.
Unfavorable.
The next item is to take thirty seconds, so I'll try to do it quickly, which is, uh, this is if we're not going to have liaisons anymore or require liaison anymore, we need to modify town code a little bit. Alternate liaison, which would be, uh, the rep, it is, uh, chapter thirteen, item five, council liaison. Currently set at each committee to have one council member for liaison and one council member alternate. What, Jeffrey has said earlier, we change to each meeting to have one council member and may have one council member holding. And so that's the only notification. And that way we cannot need to require, you know, some less.
Agreed, let's move on, next item.
Alright, um.
So, so we'll have the the town attorney draft something to vote on.
Giving me a lot of homework.
How much are you going to charge for that one, Ron?
Lots.
You can dust off some old documents for that one.
Totally worth it.
Okay, so, um, there were two other items. Uh, we're not going to discuss them because it would be going too long with it. Um, one was, uh, Jeffrey, you wanted to bring up the zoning
Oh, yeah, why is, oh, you're right here.
Yeah, but you, you want to do the stormwater
Oh yeah, sorry, stormwater. That's really you, EJ, so it's a question, one of the, right?
Yes, uh, this is just basically a couple of recommended code changes. This, um, shared with you, uh, I sure if you saw it, I did, we ran out of time last month, but this was on the, for last month. Basically, uh, these are just, um, changes that don't actually change how it operates or what it says. It's all just clarifies to make sure everything fits together like it's supposed to. So making sure that, uh, some definitions are moved around to be more noticeable. Uh, some of the current sections point to subsections that don't exist. So now go through the right subsections. Or there's still some examples where it asks, where it tells them to go look at the Montgomery County zoning ordinance when now uh, we have our own code about it, so now it properly reflects our, to our own code. And then gets rid of some things that have basically been replaced by other things. And so are kind of really shouldn't move into the area anymore. So it's just a, a couple of technical revisions and clarifications.
Right, I had one comment myself on it, but anybody, any comments? One's going, alright, my comment is, um, one little mistake. When you tried it out and they are much better, the, um, stormwater alternatives for E S D and structural devices. You rent rain tanks with dry wells and rainwater harvesting, you don't belong there. Um, rain tanks are typical storage devices that they discharge after forty hours, that's the state environment. So they belong with the, um, third section, but in the paragraph below that. We say the amount, if not possible, run out maybe between western, but devices temporarily store already tanks from water in parentheses, for example, rain tanks. Otherwise, it looks like everyone did before, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on it?
EJ, this is the building stormwater clarification PDF, right?
Yeah.
Not the stormwater code clarification.
No, it's the first one.
Shannon had suggested earlier that we have another look at our code on permeable driveways. I'm not suggesting we do that tonight. Uh, but I think it's a good idea because, uh, with none of the approvals so far actually have had a driveway that fits.
Yeah.
Very well, and they've come up with solutions for the driveway, but none of them have been a permeable driveway. So we, we should probably change our code bit there and, um, bring that up.
Why can't we just start it now?
Well, we can talk about it now, but it's almost twenty five seven.
Oh.
I'm in favor of I'm in favor of both, uh, the first document changes and the updated stormwater changes that are in the packet. For what it's worth. So happy to move them forward.
Yeah, right.
So the idea here for these, okay, so you have stormwater clarifications and you have stormwater project exemption. So the, the discussion tonight is whether you're prepared to ask the town attorney to write code amendments or don't.
And we're not ready.
Jeffrey, they're already in the packet, I believe.
No, 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 the, the, there are two things. We've, Ron's got plenty of work from us tonight. The, the, the issue, what we're talking about here is what EJ has been doing and he's done a very good jobs um, in terms of clearing up how we present our language on building permits. Uh, it goes through multiple pages and it's basically much better organized now so that the sections prefer appropriately and the material that's related to each other are all booked in one place instead of scattered across the document. So that's all very good, but that's just, just thank you, EJ, for doing that and I, I think you should change it that way. I don't think that, does that require a change in code?
Yes.
These are all code changes.
These will be all code changes, yeah.
In that case, it is a code change.
So, so do you want the town attorney to prepare?
Yes.
Amendment to be introduced in September.
Or special session, you know.
I think this is a big improvement. I think it will help the developers, um, understand our code better. And so I think it is very much worth doing, therefore I always recommending that our town attorney to redraw the code, building permit code, make it easier.
So we do at least three of you, so at least three of you agree with that.
Yes. Shannon.
So, so he will draft and then it will be introduced in, at September, September meeting.
Okay.
Alright.
And then the second is the update to the stormwater code with the emphasis on driveways and other elements. Is that correct?
That, that we need discussion of and I want the whole council here to discuss it. Steve is not here, so.
But we can look at that draft as the foundation of the conversation, correct?
Well, there's no draft at the moment.
Isn't there something in the packet?
Well, no, there's nothing in the packet on changing the permeable driveway requirement.
Okay, understood, understood.
This is the, this is the, uh, uh, minor project exemption.
Right, which? Wrong, wrong, that's, that's not what I intended of it.
It's a, it's a possible discussion topic, bullet point number one.
Yeah, it's right. But, but I think if the, if the council president feels that we should have everybody here.
Yeah, also I want, I think that we should discuss on, you know, what's permeable and not permeable in our code.
Yes, uh, but we, we, right, we should have that stuff, but alright.
So we can do that at the August meeting.
We, make that a
August, uh,
I was, August work section, so the item, potential discussion, if we had time, we don't really have time, where, yes, um, how to exempt small progress from our stormwater, uh, requirements and the I wanted that, he should be here for that, so we really should not have that discussion, Matt. Change to the town code that, that Gudlo Meyer wants, um, which he posed in which Is there anything in there that we should really know? I mean, I, I looked at it, I didn't see a lot, just some reorganizing.
I, yeah, it's basically, this actually came up because of the hearing that we had, uh, earlier tonight where in the code, there's time for it will say exception or waiver or variance. But then our code also says, uh, that they're all treated like a variance. So Doug's basically recommending that we just go through and change everything to say variance. Instead of all treated the same.
Well, they're treated the same for the hearing protocol, but not for criteria. You had, can you send me his, I didn't see that in here.
So, alright, so I wanted to say, I wanted to say something related to that uh, hearing we had. And then I wanted to say that I think that giving the latest of the hour, in fact, that that's what our circle is in here, that, um, all they want to bring up the, uh, issue of, I think, change the single family zone for just a minute. But what I wanted to say about the, um, this public hearing that we had about the variances and the fence, so to speak, these day. The, the reason why there are all those problems with that applicant is because she, she didn't she wasn't really oriented to, um, our particulars in our code that involved all those projects you want to take. So the staff is, we're working on a better way to, um, deal with newcomers. Um, so that we actually have them come in and meet with them and we go over all these things. So that we avoid having to
That's a great idea.
This whole thing was totally unfortunate.
Yeah.
Because, and it, and some of it was her fault and some of it was not her fault.
Yeah.
But we want to make sure that there's never this problem. And, and usually when there, the, when these variances, sometimes when these kind of things come here, it's because you know, they didn't know, but it's just like you were talking about her, she, she got an ignorant, um, contractor. So these are the kind of things we want to tell new people when they move here is about, you know, always get a licensed contractor and pay attention to these certain things that are different in our town that are, that are sort of really important. So anyway, hopefully that's not going to happen again. But I, I do applaud the way you all dealt with, with, um, I think it was an excellent outcome. And the last thing I want to say before, I think we should adjourn, is that, so you all know that the planning board has recommended changes to single family sound. And where it stands now is they made recommendations and they have briefed the council on their recommendations and, but no legislation, there's any text amendment that have been introduced. And, and, and I, in talking with some of the council members, I really don't think that this issue is going to actually become before the council, so maybe next year. But in the meantime, we need to arm ourselves and our citizens with the information. So what I'm proposing is that sometime soon, at a time that's convenient for all of you, that we have a Zoom, uh, meeting with a staff person from the planning board EJ's already been in touch with, to basically have the same briefing that they gave the county council. They, I think they've also given the full county council and, and the, the committee the thing. So, so we'll have that briefing, which of course will be public and probably during the day.
Did you have that, you need to, not the full council, I think it was just a
But I didn't give a, I don't know, anyway, we're, we're gonna, so we're, so, so first, we're, I, I will propose that we have this briefing. So, because there's a lot of questions, initial questions that Okay, so then, and we can do that sometime, um, this summer.
That would do anything wrong, that wouldn't be set up.
No, we haven't set it up.
You mean that Lisa Giovanni?
We haven't set that up yet, because we have to pull up the date.
I mean, I would recommend September if we can.
No, 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 but, but hear me out. The first thing is a briefing for all of you at a time that you can all attend, which will be recorded. And it'll just be a briefing for the five of you. Then in September, we, we would have, and I wanted to get your reaction. Then in September, we would have an evening, maybe, where somebody from the planning board comes here and presents it to our citizens. Like in September.
Yeah.
Yeah, the August is just for all of you to get your
Okay.
To, to be ahead of the curve.
Well, Lisa, great idea.
Justin has written, Justin and I both went to the, uh, the planning meeting.
Yeah.
And we also had a meeting with two of the planning board people.
I understand.
And he has written a great, I call it, I call it, um, you know, technical housing one-on-one.
Okay.
Put into the journal.
Okay.
And so
So that's what everybody should be reading.
That's right, yeah.
And this is, this is, this is certain that all five of you, and we will come up with a date that everybody's available during the day and it'll just be on Zoom. It's just going to be a presentation that you all can ask questions, can be reported and citizens can watch that. Then in September, we'll have a formal presentation, hopefully in person, maybe in the evening. If it comes, that's also And then, and then, and then we'll take it from there. But, but, but I think that, that beyond that, maybe in the future, we can have a panel, some kind of panel discussion with the pros and the cons. Yeah, but, but this is my initial process, who we get ahead of the curve, so we arm ourselves. Right now, it's important that we arm ourselves and our citizens with as much information as possible. Most of what I've read, even it's well-written, they don't have all the information, nobody has all the information in these. And the fact of the matter is, is that we can't start commenting on zoning text amendments, which haven't even been written yet. And, and another big hole, missing hole is, yes, they're talking about changing the single family zoning, right? It's the town attorney. But, but there isn't really, I think everybody, everybody agrees with the goal that we need more multiple price point housing in the county. But, but some of the criticism that's already been levied against the planning, which plan is all that does is provide builders and developers with creating more housing, but not, it's attainable.
Not even attainable, right?
Yeah. So, so these are all questions that, you know, we all need to, and I'm glad that, that, that our
I'm on it.
Chair is on it, or, or
CCC, ACC, Wednesday night.
And, and then, and also, um, John Barry is going to be writing an op-ed in the Journalist Month about in some of the history books. It's really a fascinating topic.
Yeah.
So thank you, everybody. So we will, we will, um, find the time and everybody
I will tell you, we have the planning, uh, committee, the board, um, you know, through Jason Santori, Santori. I mean, he is like, he's done, he's got it. This is the way it's going to be. And he's gung ho because he lives where he's not going to be touched. But he's also, one of his, one of the things that he will say is that he just wants to eliminate parking.
But he doesn't make the decision.
He, he doesn't, but I mean, telling you, when I watch the hearing, they're eating up. You know.
They have it, they have it, the council hasn't even introduced it. We don't even know what, you know, it's just a, it's just an idea. Move, we adjourn.
You know what it is.